I have a council member and a non-council member today.
Okay, so that's what I'd like to do. So if that's okay with council members, I have your support for doing that?
Yeah, I think the sooner the better because they're getting ready to expand already.
Good.
Next month.
Exactly. I think December 9th is the rollout date for the other. And yes.
I would be happy to serve in that committee.
Yes, thank you. So at this point, that's what we will do. We will reassure you that we will continue to put pressure. We'll contact our other electives, Anna Eshu, Warren Slocombe, the other Redwood City, San Carlos people, electives, and see if we can put together a joint neighborhood outreach meeting. Yes, sir?
That's Surveair.
And Surveair. Yes, of course, with Mr.
You mentioned December 9th as an expansion date for Surveair, is that?
Yes, they're going to introduce flights from Porthor up to San Carlos.
Twenty flights?
I think there's three. There'll be three or four more. Yeah, is what their website says.
You know, you might ask them if they're going to buy the same planes too. Because other aircraft that could use it would be much quieter.
Okay. So with that, we'll close this agenda item. There's another action to be taken. Oh, yes, sir? It's going to be council members elect DeBoye and myself. Yes. Okay. So and with that, thank you all very much, and you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but I don't think you'll want to.
Thank you!
So as our neighbors are exiting, we're going to bring our attention back to the agenda item number 16. Okay. So we'll let all of our other guests leave. Thank you, Steve. Okay, great. So item number 16 is an item having to do with the Marsh Road channel contract with Big Scardosa. And we have been discussing this for months and months and months. And our staff report has been prepared by our community services director, Mike Keshawaki. Do you have to make a presentation now?
Sure. Mayor, let me list the members of the city council. This report represents or presents information requested by the city council at your October city council workshop. At that workshop, city council reached consensus on two repair alternatives for the Marsh Road wall. These two alternatives being the cast-in-place concrete channel and the box culvert. However, before moving forward with the final type selection, city council wanted additional information regarding both alternatives' ability to facilitate construction of a bicycle pedestrian path on top of the channel. Additional information included confirming the feasibility that could be done for both alternatives, to confirm that the hydraulic capacity of the existing channel would be maintained and there would not be any increase in upstream flood risks, also to take a look at environmental implications of covering the existing channel to accommodate the bike pedestrian path, also developing estimated costs associated with a covered channel. Based upon discussion at your October workshop, staff also believes the city council had an interest in evaluating the potential benefits of covering the channel as part of the Marsh Road wall repair project versus adding the cover at a later time. Accordingly, we met with our consultants, Big Scardosa Associates, to discuss and provide direction regarding the additional analysis that should be performed. And this resulted in the technical memorandum, which is dated November 14th, which is included as part of your staff report. And so to summarize those results very quickly, first of all, with regards to the feasibility, both alternatives can accommodate a future cover for bike path. With regards to hydraulic capacity and downstream flood risk, all alternatives maintain existing hydraulic capacity of the existing channel, and all alternatives can be designed in a manner which does not increase or alter downstream flows. With regards to environmental implications of covering the existing channel, it is the opinion of the town's planning staff that limiting the scope of improvements to channel repair would be categorically exempt. However, covering the existing channel either now or in the future will trigger additional environmental review and regulatory permitting requirements. These additional requirements will include a more detailed environmental assessment of the impacts of covering the channel, and a potentially lengthy discussion and negotiation with regulatory permitting agencies due to changing the nature of the existing channel from being open to being a closed conduit. Although the cost in terms of time and required mitigation measures is somewhat unpredictable, staff estimates a minimum of two to three years would be required to get through the environmental and regulatory permitting process. The estimated cost for the additional environmental analysis is estimated to be around $400,000. In addition, staff believes that there would be additional costs resulting from compensatory mitigation requirements to be determined as part of the regulatory permitting process. As far as the estimated costs for the covered alternatives, in current dollars, the estimated cost to repair the Marsh Road wall with a cast-in-place concrete channel is approximately $2.4 million. The additive cost to provide a concrete cover is approximately $1.4 million, and the additive cost of providing what we're calling the boardwalk alternative is approximately $2.4 million. So in summary, one of the questions of the council was to assess the potential benefits and trade-offs of constructing a cover for a future bicycle pedestrian facility now versus in the future. And as stated in the staff report, we estimate that constructing the cover as a future project would add an additional 20% to the current cost of construction plus whatever inflation is between now and whenever that future cover would be constructed. So although there is a definite construction cost benefit to constructing a cover now, the trade-off would be a project delay of up to three years or more due to the additional environmental analysis and regulatory permitting requirements. Due to the existing conditions of the Marsh Road wall, if this project were to be delayed for three years, our consultant, Big Scardosa, recommends an annual maintenance and inspection program during that period of time. So based upon all this information, staff recommends moving forward with the cast-in-place concrete channel only. The primary reason for this recommendation is we believe it is important to repair the existing channel without delay. Accordingly, staff recommends that the city council approves the concrete cast-in-place option to repair the Marsh Road wall, that the city council select a preferred concept for a future bicycle pedestrian path, and that the city council direct staff to negotiate an agreement for final design to repair the wall with Big Scardosa Associates. If the council has any questions, additional questions regarding structure or hydraulics, we do have Anthony Notaro from Big Scardosa here this evening, as well as Ed Piscaci from BKF. BKF was the subconsultant to Big Scardosa who did all the hydraulics and flood analysis. And that concludes staff presentation.
Bring it back to council for any questions or clarifying comments.
Well, I have quite a lot of questions, actually. One of them, it seems to me that the box cover is a much cheaper way of covering that channel than anything else you propose. I mean, it's probably half a million dollars cheaper to do the box cover right away rather than 2A, which is an uncovered channel, and then add another over a million dollars to cover it. It seems to me that I don't quite understand why you're not recommending the box cover.
Well, primarily, again, for the box cover, it will require the additional environmental evaluation and permitting.
But any cover is going to require the additional environmental. Isn't that correct?
That's correct. But I think the question is, at what point do you do that?
Well, it seems to me that if we need environmental approval for the box cover or some other cover, we might as well get it right away. And then we still save half a million dollars.
So I have a question about the box, the covered with the boardwalk type of cover. That when I think about a boardwalk type cover, it is not a complete encapsulment of the culvert. It does not totally encapsulate the culvert. It allows for overflow of water. If it's flooding, it's open. It's really not an enclosed cover.
Yeah, there's space between.
But it's not completely closed.
It is completely closed.
No, it's not.
The box cover is completely.
Well, yes, the box cover.
She's asking about the board.
I'm talking about the boardwalk. And so I challenge the planning staff's opinion about having to do a complete EIR for a wooden cover over this open channel. I challenge that because I don't think that it would constitute an encapsulment, a complete cover, that would need an EIR.
The environmental work would probably be easier with an open removable channel, but you'd still need to do the environmental work.
Right. And you might as well do it once.
Well, but so I think there's things to take into consideration here that have to do with aesthetics. This is the gateway to our town. This is, this could be something that is beautiful and useful and that kind of as a gateway into Mellow Park, I mean, into Atherton. And if we can get Mellow Park to work with us to extend that boardwalk head bike path up to Bay, it's not that long of a stretch with the railing, the protective railing, and bring our bike path through our town, winding it through into our town center along Over Palmer Park, covering that channel also. It could be something that is stunning and useful and connect our town. So I don't think that we need to totally only focus on the what's the cheapest approach here because this is something that has been, we've delayed it, delayed it, delayed it, but if we do it, let's do it right. Let's do it beautifully. Let's make Atherton's entrance something that everyone can be proud of. So that's where I'm coming from. I just want to challenge the fact that the EIR would be required for an open slatted boardwalk that it would do. So I have other questions that I'll open back up to you, Mr. Wigger.
Oh, I think Jim wants to.
I have one more thing here. The ugliest part of Marsh Road, yeah, are all the various fences that the residents have put in. I mean, they're wooden, they're concrete, and they're just a mess, actually. So if we want to improve the look of that part of Marsh Road, the ethnic part of Marsh Road, one of the things we should be thinking about, if we use, for instance, if we use a box cover, which encloses it totally, is to put some shrubbery behind that box cover so that we hide those really, really ugly fences. And, you know, the residents are not going to change their fences, so we have to do something, and we really want it more beautiful.
Okay. So I've got about three, three or four questions. I'd like to follow on, I guess, with the mayor's question. Because when you put a boardwalk, I mean, it could be that all the boards are right together, but I think what I was thinking of when the mayor described that at the last meeting was something like you'd see, you know, going up over the sand dunes at, say, a beach down in the southern part of the state or over in the Gulf Coast area. So there's space between them. So it's really not something that's actually closed, per se. It's open, sunlight gets through, water could percolate out, it might be raised up a little bit so things can go off to the side, animals could come in and out. So I, you know, I have to be, you know, say that along with the mayor, I'm a little surprised with, and maybe it was a misunderstanding on the concept, but I was looking at something that would be, you know, maybe a quarter of an inch or whatever, a third of an inch between the plant, and, you know, so if you rode your bike over it, I mean, you'd go pop, 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 you know, but it wouldn't be smooth, but it wouldn't be, and you could drop a quarter or something down it, but for the most part, it would be something you could fall through. Okay?
You can't drop a baby down.
Yeah, that's exactly. So, you know, I guess I would like to have some clarity with regards to that, but that's question one. Question two is with the cast-in-place, of course, you know, we've got this soil nail project, which has got the cast-in-place, you know, not the cast-in-place, but I guess it was, it's a cast-in-place on top of it. That's requiring maintenance on a periodic basis, and as we pointed out, and this thing, I think you had a picture in the last presentation, and it was like seven or eight years ago when we did that last major maintenance. So, and now we're talking about another maintenance of a couple, two or three million dollars. So what is the maintenance on the cast-in-place? So if you spend the 2.3, what's going to be the maintenance period and the potential maintenance cost for a life cycle? Okay? Because if you put a box culvert in there, it's kind of in and it's done. I realize you have to go through it and clean it out periodically, the same as you're going to have to do with cast-in-place. But there seems to be more erosion potential. And then I guess that my last major question is on the, when we looked at the box culvert last time, the presentation, you know, talked about, and even here in the paper, it says, hey, the volume of water that's going to be in the box is going to be greater than what's coming into it. And we asked the question, and I didn't see the answer here, but maybe I missed it. Our question was, what happens and what's the sizing at the other end? Because we can't be having, you know, 10 tons of water coming, and then suddenly there's a little five-ton hole to put it into. Okay? And when we said, well, that water pounding in there, it's going to cause a problem down at the connection, and the answer from the consultant was, yeah, it could. And we said, well, we'd like you to come back with an answer on it, what it is. And I didn't see the answer, so.
He said the hydrology.
He does say that they're going to open the ends of the box cover.
Yeah.
But it's going to be, it's going to be an exact fit now, so it'll go through? Because I didn't see that in this response. So if we could, if we could get it.
No, and on the first two questions, maybe I can ask Anthony with Big Scardosa to address the questions about, you know, the boardwalk.
Okay.
And about the ongoing maintenance of the box culvert as opposed to the cast-in-place. But, you know, please, this is not a maintenance. Actually, what all these alternatives will be doing is replacing the existing channel. So at the end, you will have a brand-new facility, whether it's a box culvert or whether it's a cast-in-place covered channel. And then your last question about the hydraulics, that's why we have Ed Piscaci with BKF here this evening to address that.
Before they get started, though, as maybe they're coming to the front, Mike, can the town make a decision on 2A or on 2A with an open cast-in-place without the cover? Look at a design for the boardwalk that's more aesthetically pleasing, more what the council might be looking for, maybe provide some more open air issues, maybe even be an easier, faster, and cheaper environmental process. Do that, but run that concurrently, putting in the channel or you're working the design process of putting in the channel, and you're going through the environmental necessary process for the cover process at the same time. Can we do that?
You know, I would like to, I don't know, because there's a project. The first project would be to replace the existing channel, and the planning department has indicated that if just all you're doing is replacing what's in it and including what's there, then it's a categorical exemption. But the next phase would be now actually covering it for a potential bike pedestrian facility. I don't, as far as doing it concurrently, I'm not sure.
Well, I'm doing two separate projects because it would take longer to do the environmental and the cover part than it would installation of 2A.
Is there anyone here that's on here that can't be able to answer that?
We have to do the environmental study.
Yeah, and then you're two, three years out.
They shouldn't answer a sequel question unless they're a lawyer. And I don't see one coming up, so we're not going to expect a sequel analysis.
Oh, no.
No. We're not getting a definitive sequel analysis on that.
The way that we had approached looking at it is doing the repair or the replacement of kind, and we would agree with the assessment of the town that that would qualify as a cat X. Anything beyond that would require supplemental environmental review and study. And we would picture that as a kind of a separate second phase portion of the project. If you go that route, that gets your repairs and the replacement of the channel, and then the delay with the environmental process, then we can come back in and put the topping slab on or the boardwalk concept. At this stage, the boardwalk concept that was conceived was, in essence, a linear pedestrian bridge, like a steel fab pedestrian bridge, similar probably to what's at, I think, Cobra Park, the self-weathering steel. It'd be like a linear boardwalk over the channel. Now, one challenge that we have with the channel is it's a very narrow channel, and the preliminary sizing that was requested down to us was an eight-foot-wide boardwalk where you have a channel, the deep part of the channel is roughly 13 to 15 feet wide. There's some shoulder area and stuff that's not quite as shallow, so if you look at the very rough preliminary sketches, it does, that pathway does sit on a large percentage of that channelway. The other item is that because it's not a smooth deck surface, you would have intermittent beams or other potential obstructions, we would need to raise that element a little bit higher just to make sure you have a free board so you're not collecting excess debris, which would then drive up your maintenance costs and things.
And so would that be higher than the street level?
Yeah. It would, yes, because currently the flood relief is at street level, and to maintain your existing flows, we would need to raise that up since we cannot lower the bottom of the channel because we still have to conform at the exit way at Fair Oaks.
So it seems to me the simplest thing to do at this juncture is to do the type 2A cast-in-place concrete U-channel and, you know, and get that done to save the channel, you know, the urgency is so that the channel wall doesn't collapse on us, to get that done, and then at a future date, to be able to decide whether or not we can put the boardwalk on it or not. Would it have to be designed to receive the boardwalk at the time you're putting it?
We would design it to perform without a boardwalk, and we could design it for the future case as well. So yes, we would conceive in our design phase of what the town would want that facility to become and design in the ability to accommodate that for future.
Could I ask you a question? What would the environmental review be for the box cover relative to the boardwalk? Would it be the same?
Well, again, I'm not an environmental consultant, and because of.
Give me your opinion.
Okay, I'll give you my opinion.
Maybe the city attorney would be able to opine on that.
All of these that exceed the repair option, all of them will require an initial study. The initial study will be looked at depending on which ones you want to look at, what potential significant environmental impacts might result from it. Now, it could be that at that stage, they look at it and they say, this could be, any that are identified could be mitigated to a level that makes them not significant. If that's the case, you can do a negative declaration, really cheap. If it requires further study by engineers and all, then, you know, like as Mike says, it could go as high as $400,000. I'm not so sure that I, I'm convinced it's going to be that far drastic, but it's the planners that do the initial study, and they look at it very, in very intense detail over a whole bunch of issues, the most significant of which undoubtedly will be the critters that we know are in and around and what.
You mean frogs?
Frogs, there's wood, dusky wood rats. I mean, there are things in that channel that would have to be looked at. And the question would then be, could the design be such that it's mitigated to where it doesn't need an environmental impact report? That's going to depend on what you want to look at.
The only thing I'm saying again is.
A lot of people.
Unless I'm reading this wrong, the box cover saves us about half a million dollars.
Yes, that is the low-cost alternative.
Yeah.
Is there a?
I mean, we have to consider the cost.
Except if the environmental review is, has to happen alongside it and could take two to three years.
Yes, and it would have to be acceptable to all of the various.
And we would have a cost of maintenance on that yearly until the environmental review is done, so we should consider those costs as well.
Which is how much a year?
With maintenance and all.
With that, it's $100,000?
Hopefully, we have no failure.
Right. I mean, what we would envision is that every year, getting a consultant out to walk the channel, do a detailed inspection, and then if there's any cracks or voids that they feel needs to be covered and repaired, we would do that. So, you know, I don't know, it's really based on what you find, but, you know, we would probably budget $15,000 to $20,000 per year for those activities.
Just a short question on strength. Between the two, the box culvert and the boardwalk, is there a strength factor by adding the top after effect versus the box culvert that's?
The box culvert, if you build that directly, it's the most efficient of the structure because you have an enclosed box shape. If we build the U-channel first, it'll be a little bit more robust because you have to, you've got these cantilever walls that aren't supported at the top or strudded across. So you'll end up with thicker elements, but the overall strength of the structure will be designed to basically be the same, it's just the box culvert's going to be more efficient, less concrete, thinner members, and some of that's reflected in the cost.
I remember that the box culvert, the construction of it is more invasive for trees because of the cranes having to put these sections of the box.
In the original report, we looked at a cast-in-place box, and we also looked at a pre-cast alternative. For a pre-cast alternative, you'd have to lift large segments in, that would have a potential impact to your trees. But we're looking, we've narrowed it down to a cast-in-place, you'll be able to do a lot of your work from in the channel and try and minimize the amount of work we're doing from the street to keep that as open as possible.
Now, just as another point of information with respect to the box culvert, it has a pathway on top which could be decomposed ground of some kind on top of the box culvert? You could aesthetically design that differently.
Absolutely. Yes, and at different element length or segments of the channel, you'll have different levels of cover, you can do different planning in different areas, which will have deeper up towards Middlefield, shallower towards Fair Oaks. For me, I guess, can you, can you verify the hydrology of the water levels at, at the Mellow Park area? Yeah, I'll have Ed speak to that. But in general, our goal is to not change the existing behavior and push a lot of extra water downstream or stop water from coming.
Right. Well, the only reason I'm asking the question because it wasn't real clear last time, and so I just.
Yeah, I'll let Ed.
Ed Biscaci with BKF Engineers. We did the whole regional model for Atherton, it's actually getting extended into the Bayfront Canal. So we're very sensitive to maintaining exactly what's happening because there's so many dominoes in this system. Right now, it's what's called inlet control, there's only so much water that could go into, it's like 11.7 by 5.6 or something like that, entrance at the far end. So right now, we have a rough rock mortar line channel that we'd be replacing with smooth bald surface. That makes, you get more flow per unit area, the water will go faster, so you get more through less. So we're getting the same flow rate through the system, and because the restriction at the downstream end, water is going to have to be allowed to pop out of this and spill just similar to what it's doing now. So the system would be designed to spill consistent with current so that upstream will have the exact same conditions, downstream will have the same conditions. It'll behave differently in between, and we'll have to be very careful with the engineering to assure that that occurs. Couple other notes, and this is getting outside my expertise, but I want to bring it up. Port of Redwood City has been told by BCDC that they have to remove a boardwalk, and they're replacing with concrete. The reason they have to replace it is because the boards are too far apart and it doesn't meet ADA. So, you know, there are just so many dominoes in this process. It sympathizes with everybody trying to do design in this, where you think, can't we just say no people? And maybe, maybe you can restrict it, but it seems like every time we try and get creative with the regional board, there's somebody else. And among the creativity issues, we have another project in Los Altos Hills neighborhood. And for those who've seen this channel, it's, this really isn't frog habitat with nice weeds and everything. This is rock lined with a concrete bottom. I don't know why any animal would want to go in it, but we had a landowner in Los Altos Hills with a nice rock riprap that we said, this is really ugly, why are you doing this? And we had a proposal to the regional board where we said, we'll put it in a box culvert, and we'll put a nice channel over the top of it, we'll pump water into the channel so it'll look nice, and it'll be a nice earth line. And the regional board says, we are, we're chartered with being very defensive about every piece of open channel. So if you want to enclose any piece of open channel, no matter how ugly, you have to open up a channel. So when you look at the $500,000 savings, there's a cost on the other side to open up the channel, so. None of that was asked, but I just want you to be aware that there are just a lot of very adamant people working for the state who are going to be pushing for preserving every bit of open channel they have. On the flip side of this, there are ways around it, and that's why we could see what the city could do. I'm not saying that anyone will trigger, but I just want you to be aware of it.
Do you know how wide the boardwalk was, the separation?
It was incredibly close. It was so disturbing at the Port of Redwood. Talk to Don Stamen about it, and he would, his head will explode, and he'll tell you how upset he is, and why am I, why am I taking an existing boardwalk that looks beautiful and having to get rid of it and replace it with concrete? Yet, on the other hand, if I were handicapped, I'd probably say yay. But I, these are all out there, and there may be an exception that I don't know about that he hasn't found.
Okay. All right. Can we ask for public comment at this time? Let's open the public comment. I, if anyone wants to express interest. I know that I had received a couple of emails, one from Adina Levin, who's on the Bike Head Stakeholders Advisory Group. And basically, she is encouraging us to accept the staff recommendation to move forward with the channel repair, using a design that will accommodate a potential trail and hold off building that trail until the city has completed the plan for the Bike Head routes citywide, which makes a lot of sense because, well, we can't really build a bike path to nowhere. We've got to get agreement from Mellow Park to open up their area from where it begins on Marsh to Bay. And then I had another resident who's actually here send an email which is agreeing with our approach and wanting to.
Madam Mayor, I will warn you, if you read that in on the record, then she can't testify.
We'll let you say, okay. So, yes, sir.
We wouldn't want that to happen.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Excuse me. My name is Bob Page. I'm a resident of Woodside, and I'm a bicycle commuter. For 40 years, I commuted on my bicycle from Woodside to Mellow Park through Atherton, and I'm very familiar with bicycle issues in the community, and served on the Bike Heads Advisory Committee to the Regional Planning Commission before SECCAG started, so a long history of this. I support the recommendation to proceed with the option 2A with the provision for possibly adding a bicycle pedestrian path on the future, in the future on the top of it. Marsh, of course, as you all know, is a, is a critical road for circulation of motorists. Well, it's also, could be a critical facility for bicyclists and pedestrians. The 2011 San Mateo County Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan points to Marsh Road as a critical east-west link, you know, in, in the regional transportation. I also noted in that 2011 plan, Atherton, which only has 1% of the county population, had 3% of the, our bicycle collisions. So, you know, there are some serious issues about bicycle safety, and right now, you know, I really hesitate riding a bicycle down Marsh.